Good evening, everyone. Seeing as the time is 7:01, I will call to order the Thursday, November 18th edition of Norton Select Board. Please let the record show that three members are present, myself, Michael Tool, Christine DeBeau. I'll let you know if anyone else joins Zoom. Let's start by doing the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Great. Let's see. I don't have the Zoom pulled up, so please, if somebody does, just let me know.
Mr. Chairman, I know Renee had said she was going to be about 45 minutes late.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. So we'll open it up for public comment. If there's anybody on the Zoom that would like to address anything either on the agenda or that's on their mind tonight, please indicate so by raising your hand. Seeing no one, we will go on to our appointments, resignations, and retirements. We have two appointments this evening. The first would be for Megan E. Sullivan as part-time assistant dog officer, and town manager has indicated that Megan has joined us this evening.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just let you know that Megan is a graduate of Bristol County Agricultural High School, where she worked on large animal science, and a graduate of the University of Wisconsin in animal science. And Megan is also in the fire academy for her town as a call fireman. I asked her if she was a paramedic, but she said no, so.
You want to scoop her right up?
I know myself and the animal control officer are looking forward to working with Megan. And as I said, Megan's on if she wants to say hello.
I was just about to say, do a sound check.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Shane has left, so.
Pat Tarantino, can you say hello?
Hello.
Okay.
Okay, hey, we have sound. So Megan, I think if we try that again and see if that.
So Megan, we're not picking you up, but.
All right, well, welcome. Very cool background, and I'm sure Brian will be thrilled to have you join the team. So, any questions for Megan?
I was just curious what animal she has, what pet she has, if you want. But other than that, I'm square, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So I will read in the notice, oh, sorry, longer reading. I hereby notify the Select Board that in accordance with provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter, acting in my capacity as appointing authority, I appoint the following individual as part-time assistant dog officer, Megan E. Sullivan. Set appointment was made on November 16, 2021, in accordance with the provisions of the Norton Charter, and will be effective December 1, 2021, unless the Select Board votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date. I specifically request the Board's acceptance of this appointment with an effective date of November 28, 2021. Do I have a second?
Is that the motion?
Yes.
So is that the statement? That was the, that was the, that was the statement. Like to make a mo, you take a motion, and I would say so moved.
Yes. Yeah, Chair, it is a motion to accept the appointment of Megan E. Sullivan as part-time assistant dog officer.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this'll be easy.
Sorry, Jack.
Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
All right. It's easier when it's only three people. It's way less we need to keep track of. Excellent. Congratulations, Megan. Welcome to, welcome to the family. Next up would be the appointment of Melissa J. McGinnis, who is here in the room with us tonight, as full-time assistant town clerk. Invite Lucia and Melissa there. Would you like to say hi? We don't have to.
You'll have to come up anyway, so we share a sooner legacy. We're not going to let you out of our seat. Come on up.
We get the special treat of town manager acting as cameraman.
I love this. This is hands-on, all hands-on today.
No, this is good.
This is Megan McGinnis. She.
We can, we can see everybody. You don't have to move the camera.
All right. Sorry, Mike, I guess your, your dreams of being a 60-minute.
Unless you want to be cameraman, then you can do like zoom in, close up.
All right. Lucia, take it away.
Okay. Have I introduced Megan McGinnis? She's Melissa. Oh, geez.
It's all Irish nowadays.
We're up to a great stage.
Sorry, Megan McGinnis, my head. She's been with the town for seven and a half months in the treasurer collector's office, and she's moving over as my assistant. I'm very happy and very excited. She's got a great work ethic, and I'm compelled to it.
Excellent. Very good. Any questions for Melissa, not Megan?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So Melissa, you were in the treasurer's office, you said? What were you doing, what were you doing there? Where'd you come from before? You only moved those seven months, what were you doing prior?
Right now, I'm the principal account clerk, so essentially, my primary function is to deal with payments that come in through the lock boxes online as well as the window. Before that, I was a 911 dispatcher in Easton.
Okay, you're cool. Excellent. One more follow-up. Christine, do you have a question?
Hi, you're good.
Is there any way that you, I might have the in as the number-one dog tech? I'm just thinking, I'd try right now. You know, have the number-one dog in town is like the.
You have to be the first one, the way the program works.
Fine, fine. First one.
I'll do one fast.
Okay.
Excellent. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
So I'll read in the letter of appointment from Mike Unitz. I hereby notify the Select Board that in accordance with provisions of Article 4, Section 2B of the Norton Charter, that acting in my capacity as appointing authority, I have appointed the following individual as full-time assistant town clerk, Melissa J. McGinnis. The appointment was made on November 16, 2021, in accordance with provisions of the Norton Charter, and will be effective December 1, 2021, unless the Select Board votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to said date. However, I specifically request the Board's acceptance of this appointment with an effective date of November 29, 2021. So Chair would entertain a motion to accept the appointment of Melissa J. McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Great. Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, too, and a yes. Congratulations, and best of luck.
Thank you. I, I.
Okey-dokey. Next up, we have the resignation of Scott Pickin from the planning board. So it says the Select Board and planning board are jointly responsible for appointing this position. So I think this is just a, do we have to accept his resignation?
No, just announcement that anyone that's interested should send in a letter of interest. They could send that to me for the board of selectmen, for the Select Board, and I would ask with maybe 30 days.
Sure. All right, so maybe we tackle this, why don't we say January 1st?
Yeah, the first meeting in January, sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Where is he in his election cycle, Mike? Is he, would this individual be?
His term expires April 22.
Oh, so it is, this coming year. Sorry, I do have it right in front of me, I apologize. Okay, so we would just make an appointment, then they would rerun, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, well, we wish Scott the best, and thank him for his contribution to planning board. All right. Oh, no.
Yeah, she did it, you know, and Jen decided to do minutes from home, but she kind of, wow, looked us out here.
Okey-dokey.
Thought he did.
Now, we can go page by page, so, yep, four pages, so I'll go first. So this is the part of our year where we go through the 2022 renewal licenses for the various establishments in town. We use a couple abbreviations, so for anyone following along at home, there is CEAA, which is Common Big Dollar All Alcoholic, CVWM, Common Big Dollar Restaurant Wine and Malt, RPAA is a retail package, all alcoholic, RPWM is retail package wine and malt, and CB is just Common Big Dollar to serve food at tables. All right, with that said, the way we typically do this is page by page, so Chair would entertain a motion to renew, is that the right language? Yeah, renew the licenses for the following establishments. Chateau Restaurant of Norton, Inc., DBA The Chateau Restaurant, 48 Bay Road, Common Vic All Alcohol, Common Vic, Live Entertainment, Dancing, Mass., Special Entertainment.
Sunday.
Sunday Entertainment for Live Entertainment and Dancing. City Oasis Incorporated, 50 Pleasant Street, Common Vic All Alcohol, Common Vic, Live Entertainment, Dancing, DJ, five coin-operated pool tables, two video games, jukebox, mass Sunday entertainment for live, live entertainment, dancing, DJ, video games, coin-operated pool tables, jukebox. Zhang's International, Inc., DBA Great Woods Mandarin, 175 Mansfield Ave., Common Vic All Alcohol, Common Vic. Home Plate Norton, LLC, 184 West Main Street, Common Vic All Alcohol, Common Vic, Live Entertainment, Dancing, Mass., Sunday Entertainment for Live Entertainment, Dancing. Zhang and Chen, Inc., DBA Jasmine Garden, 113 Mansfield Ave., Common Vic All Alcohol, Common Vic, Live Entertainment. And Kelly's Place at the Crossing, Inc., DBA Kelly's Place, 292 East Main Street, Common Vic All Alcohol, Common Vic.
Second. She made the motion.
I think it, okay.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, too, and a yes. So, Mike, you want to do the next page?
Yeah, I'll go to the next page. Any, should I do these new initials? No, that's all same. NEHA Corp., doing businesses Quick Stop, Retail Package Wine Malt, oh, boy. Laji Karumpa, Inc., doing businesses Sun Market, 181 West Main Street, Retail Package Wine Malt. Windows Pub, Inc., 30 Main Street, CB, Common Vic All Alcohol, a Common Vic to serve food at tables, jukebox, one video game, mass Sunday entertainment for jukebox and one video game. And Hang Corporation, doing businesses Bagels and Creams, 57 West Main Street, Common Vic. Oxbow Oxbes Restaurant Group, Inc., doing business as Best Sandwich Shop, 175 Mansfield Avenue, Common Vic. Great Woods Donuts, Inc., doing businesses Dunkin' Donuts, 175 Mansfield Avenue, Common Vic. Hyatt LLC, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, 246 East Main Street, Common Vic. Route 123 Donuts, Inc., doing business as Dunkin' Donuts, 428 Old Colony Road, Common Vic. Jason P. Doll, doing business as The Fork and Bib, 33 Main Street, Common Vic. P&amp;D Management LLC, doing business as McDonald's, 175 Mansfield Avenue, Common Vic. Ultimate Pizza, Inc., doing business as Pizza Time, 250 Main Street, Common Vic. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, too, and a yes. Do you want to do the next one? Yep, so I'll take the next page. It's the last of the Common Vics, so Chair would entertain a motion to renew the license for Keemang Dynasty LLC, 63 East Main Street, Common Vic.
Oh, I'm sorry. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, too, and a yes. So, quick question for the town manager. It is 7:16, should we jump to the public hearing?
Sure, we'll come back to.
All right, yeah, we'll come back to the rules. With the time being 7:16, Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the application for a transfer of retail package goods store license to expose, keep, or seal, and to sell all kinds of alcoholics beverages not to be drunk on the premises at 194 South Worcester Street, Norton, from Bristol Beverages, Inc., DBA Barrowsville Station, manager Vishal Patel, to Uniadam Corp., DBA Highland Farm, manager Jagar Patel. License will also be requested approval of the pledge of inventory and pledge license same as. We have a.
So moved. You won't be needing.
Yep. All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'll call again, I guess. Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, too, and a yes.
Can we, whoever's online, can we just mute you for a second? Because we're just getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, Mike, you want to talk us through this one?
Sure. We have the attorney for the company online, and he can explain this to you.
All right. Welcome, sir.
Hey, thank you, Board. Matthew Porter, I'm the attorney for Uniadam Corp. Along with me tonight, I think there was some interference on his phone, that is Jagar Patel. Mr. Patel is the president of the corporation, he'd also be the proposed license manager. So before the board visits the transfer of the all-alcohol license at 194 South Worcester Street, which train now does business at Barrowsville Station, every time we'd be taking over that location, doing business as Highland Farm. This is a very experienced operation. These guys have been in this industry for a decade and a half. They own other locations at which they've run extremely responsibly and very well, so certainly nothing due to them. The one thing I would point to the board is that they would be restoring the location, so it would be going in, doing a full restoration of it, bringing up to date, and actually bringing back the deli, which was a real big asset of that location previously, which is, which has not been used under the current ownership. So with that, you know, they're very excited about getting started. There is a pledge of license to Rockland Trust, we're financing the transaction, but otherwise a fairly straightforward transfer.
Excellent. Open up to questions. Michael?
Attorney, could you just walk us through? I know we just recently saw this application in front of this board, I want to say within the last couple of months, that I think it was a change of manager. Is that just the old transaction? Could you maybe walk us through just where we were for the last time? Mike, am I wrong about that, which we saw recently?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I can fill you in as the best I know. I mean, that was the previous ownership group that had taken over somewhat recently. I think with COVID and some of the shortage in staffing, they were having a hard time brought in that location. I believe they were before your board trying to change out managers. In the end, I think they realized that they, it was probably in their best interest to sell. So this is a brand-new ownership group coming in and hopefully restoring it to what it was previous.
Okay, so they weren't the appointed last manager or anything like that?
No, this is a brand-new, yet beyond the last paper, it's a very common name within the industry community, Indian community, that there's no relationship between seller or buyer, it's an arms-length transaction.
That's great.
I could just meet, I don't know, whatever the word is that I'm picking up. I have multiple, I've heard from multiple residents that they would love to have the pizza back, you know, saying. There would be a lot of residents that would be very happy to have Barrowsville Station back for pizza, but besides that.
Yeah. The, I think this ownership is very cognizant of the fact that, you know, the deli going down, you know, was not just detrimental to the town, it was detrimental to the business as well. So they're ready to build out a brand-new deli station, and I think the town would be very happy with the change of ownership here.
Excellent. So, Mike, I'm assuming with all the paperwork that we have in front of us, that's fully, everything we need is here, all signed up by the state.
It is, everything checked out, all the core reads checked out.
Okay. Excellent. Since it's, any further questions? Michael?
Attorney, and I know maybe just a preference thing, usually typically, commercial leases have started 20 years, and they just have five-year renewals. I see you guys just kind of went with the 10-year. Was there a rationale from that, or was there just, it just the way it worked out?
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, as far as the leases are concerned, you know, from, from our perspective, we're trying to match those up with the commercial lenders, so they need to match the length of the term. Our folks are actually buying real estate as well, so they're really leasing back to themselves. So the lease is more of a formality than anything else, to be honest with you. It's just really for banking purposes.
Great. And, and.
Absolutely.
As, as you probably are aware, Barrowsville was a, was a community member for many years, and they supported local sports groups and all that in the area. Do the Patels plan to, you obviously, I'm not sure if they live in town or if they're close by, do they plan to reinvest some, you know, support on local charities or anything in town?
Yeah, yeah, I think they'd be happy to welcome the, you know, that's the board. I mean, this is a new town for them, they aren't local, you know, but certainly I can have them reach out to the board and, in any way for them to be involved in the community, they'd be happy to be.
Great. Excellent. Christine, any questions?
Nope.
All right. I have none myself, so given that this is a public hearing, I'll open it up to anybody that is on Zoom. If there's any questions, please raise your hand or speak up. So I don't see anything coming through, so let me. Yeah, go for it.
Do I have to read the name? Let me just read that. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of retail package goods store license to expose, keep, or seal, and to sell all kinds of alcohol beverages not to be drunk on the premises at 194 South Worcester Street, Norton, Massachusetts, 02766, from Bristol, from Bristol Beverages, Inc., doing business at Barrowsville Station, to read it all, Vishal Patel, and to, oh, boy, Uniadam, Uniadam Corp., doing business at Highland Farms, manager Jagar Patel, that, the proposed license, ooh, I'm sorry, we'll also be requesting approval, and the approval of the pledge of inventory and the pledge of license at the same address. Sorry that if I was a little choppy about that.
Yeah, that was a multiple.
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. Excellent. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes, congratulations.
Aye, too, and a yes. So best of luck to you, sir.
Thank you so much.
All right. So with the public hearing business concluded, Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Set, so moved.
Second.
Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, too, and a yes. Which brings us back to our.
Licenses.
Regular licenses. And now we get into our auto agents and used car dealers. So a Class 1 is an agent or seller's license for the sale of new motor vehicles. A Class 2 is a used car dealer's license to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles, and a Class 3 is a motor vehicle junk license. So Chair would entertain a motion to renew the licenses for the following establishments. Atia Reed, DBA Tucson's Auto Brokers, 407 Old Colony Road, Class 2. Edward Fontenot, DBA Colonial Motors, 380 Old Colony Road, Class 2. Fogarty Enterprises, 97 Oak Street, Class 3. John M. Freeman and Dorothy A. Freeman, DBA Freeman's Garage, 29 Ford Road, Class 2. John M. Freeman and Dorothy A. Freeman, DBA Freeman's Garage, 29 Ford Road, Class 3. Midway Service Center, Inc., 92 East Main Street, Class 2. Platinum Auto Sales, 145 R. West Main Street, Class 2. Quality Van Sales, Inc., 349 Old Colony Road, Class 1. And Trans International Autos, Inc., DBA Route 123 Motors, 406 Old Colony Road, Class 2.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Two, and a yes. And Lodging Houses, I'll just knock these ones out. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the following Lodging Houses. Eight Pine Street, LLC, Peter G. Byrd owner, Eight Pine Street Lodging House, and the North Cottage Program, Inc., 69 East Main Street Lodging House, Common Vic.
Can I just give you a discussion? Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All right. Michael had another question?
Mike, I'm assuming, this is, I think I ask this every year, the fire chief and the fire department, just us approving this, doesn't, they're still going to do their inspections and?
They, all these, the fire chief, I mean, the fire department and the building commissioner inspect all the restaurants and all the lodgings.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second. Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, too, and a yes. And round one of license renewals in the books.
So, so, Mr. Chair, Jen Reed, where are we with, how many do we usually get, and where are we with renewals? Is that?
So I actually think we're pretty ahead of schedule. Licenses have been really good about getting them back sooner rather than later, but I think we're actually in really good shape.
Great, and I just want to say you're doing a great job at it. This is a hurt-coming task.
I won't say, I won't say because they're afraid. I saw someone apologizing to Jen the other day. She's running a tight camp.
Every, every year, we get a little bit earlier. I think it's the first time I remember doing these before Thanksgiving, so next time, before Halloween.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jen. So in terms of announcements, hold on. Yeah, I forgot to mention virtual. All right. So we were looking to recognize the Boy Scouts for leading the Pledge of Allegiance at the town meeting. Don't know if we have the names of those individuals, or if there's anyone on from there. I know they had reached out to our moderator to offer to do that, and I think that was a really great moment for the community. So perhaps we can get their names, and we can recognize them by name at a future meeting. I'd like to thank those, those young men for, for doing that. Next would be Reeds Across America. Is that a printed announcement, or is that why Pat's joining us this evening?
That's why Pat's here.
All right. Hi, God, welcome.
I want to thank the chairperson and the Select Board and Mr. Unitz, of course, for allowing me a few minutes. It's short and brief. We are exactly a month from our wreath ceremony. This year, it is Saturday, December the 18th, and we begin at noon, which as those of you who have followed this before know, and for the information of those who have not gone or know about this, the same exact ceremony, and the script is read across the country at the same time. So it's noon here, and 11 o'clock out in Ohio, and it continues with each town zone going back an hour. So it's early. Be glad we're in Eastern time, or we'd be doing it at like 8:00 in the morning. So we're at noon, and all the other cemeteries in our country are reading the same script at the same time. It's really, it's pretty powerful when you think about that. We are open to the public this year, which is nice as opposed to having it recorded last year, and let's hope it's able to stay that way. I still suggest people bring their masks, because it doesn't hurt to have them on. The deadline to order your wreaths is toward the end of this month, it's like November 26th, and then that gives me a day or two to mail any kind of checks for cash-in. If it comes in after that, it's not a problem, we still accept money, it will just go towards next year's, 2022. So this is our third year in a row, and we hope to have a wreath on every veteran's grave in Norton again. You can send checks or money to Estelle Flatt at Town Hall, she's the veteran agent, and the checks need to be made out to Wreaths Across America. They're all, all welcome. Sometime beginning of December, the trucks come, and they deliver, or H truck comes through for us and delivers our wreaths. Last year, the police very kindly escorted the, the truck in, but we hope when we hear that we'll be able to coordinate that again.
Excellent. How much are the wreaths, Pat?
The wreaths are $15 a piece.
Excellent. And how are we looking towards your goal of putting one on the, the headstone of every veteran?
Well, we're doing very well. We're very, it's, it's hard to read the. We're very, it's, it's hard to read the, I don't like the way they set up their, their website. It's really hard for me to figure it out, but we're, I, I'm sure we will do it again this year.
So what I'm hearing is that we need as many people as possible to buy wreaths so that we can make sure that all Norton graves are done, and I believe if there's any extras, they go to Bourne National Cemetery as well. So no wreath goes unused. It's a really great program. So glad that it's in town. And I will always remember, the first year we did that, it was a rainy, miserable day. And as soon as the ceremony started, right at noon, the sun broke through, and it was just a very cool experience. It was well over 100 people there, really excited to be able to do that back in person. So congratulations.
I think we had, I think we had 600-plus veterans from Norton watching out for us that day.
Absolutely. It was quite a powerful scene.
It was really uncanny the way it just, everything stopped. Long enough for us, us to place the wreaths. I think it was like 2:00 when it started getting miserable again, but, yeah.
And even last year, you had a great, even with COVID, you had a great turnout and it, you got a wreath on all the graves even during COVID?
We did, and we did it in the snow last year when the wreaths came in. We had to pre-record the ceremony, which was great, but we were able to do that. And then we had to restrict the number of volunteers to 20 for each cemetery, but we had those. And I remember I had my truck with the, with the wreaths on the back, and we just drove up and down because we were laying them in the snow, which was kind of cool, too.
Yeah. Thank you for what you do.
So I think that's a.
The generosity of the people in town and, I have friends that I used to work with that, I mean, one guy lives in New Jersey, he, and he, he actually texts me and says, where's that website again? He'll throw like $150 down for, for wreaths. And so it's great, the support that we get from the businesses in town and friends and family and all the people. We, we just had our home plate fundraiser two weeks ago, and I got a $200 check from them, so that's 20 wreaths, yeah. Because of the program, the wreaths are actually, the wreaths cost $15 per, and the program we're on is you buy two wreaths and you get a third free, so.
Oh, that's great. Excellent.
It is.
And I think you touched on a, a very cool part of this event where it's, the people that attend get to participate as well, right? They get to physically take part in putting these wreaths on the, on the tombstones. It's a very cool way to connect with our, our history. I can't say enough good things about it.
Thank you, thank you. It was wonderful to see you and your girls there that day.
They, they had fun. They'll be looking forward to go back this year. And it is at St. Mary's Cemetery again?
Again, St. Mary's Cemetery. Well, it's actually a town home and cemetery, but it's right across the street from St. Mary's, so, yes.
Excellent.
Same place. Pat, could you just repeat the, the date and time and location? It is Saturday, December 18th, and it starts at noon, and we're sharp, we start right at noon, so get there a little early. We, we tried to have, for those who have not been to a ceremony before, we have ceremonial wreaths for each branch of the service. So we have Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard. We also have one for Merchant Marine, the POW, MIAs. We added the Purple Heart last year, and this year there is a new branch, the Space Force. So we actually have nine ceremonial wreaths that, that we present during that ceremony. And the high school makes, has made us beautiful wreath stands, which I love that the high school has, has done that for us, very nice. Is he making another one this year for the Space Force?
Excellent. Great. Any other questions for Pat?
Done.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming and speaking with us about the Reeds Across America. Look forward to December 18th.
Thank you. Spread the word.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks. Just one more announcement.
Yep, Michael?
I just, I do have one more announcement. On December 6th at 5:00 PM, Congressman Oshin Claus is going to be having a virtual Norton Roundtable, and it's, all residents are invited. And the purpose of the Roundtable with Congressman to provide an opportunity of local community leaders and residents to receive an update on the American Rescue Plan and the pending federal infrastructure legislation, which was no longer pending, packages and how they can benefit Norton. The Congressman also invites all, all citizens to come and talk them of any of the concerns or, and, and bring that question so we can answer them, so forth. And there will be, we will get this link, it will be a virtual meeting, and we'll get the link up on the Town Hall and things. But all citizens are invited for just an update. If you've never met the Congressman, he's a nice guy, and I would encourage all citizens to show up and just with their questions or concerns.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Christine, any announcements today?
I have one, if I can get the picture up. Okay. The Boy Scouts of America PAC 27 and Troop 12 are holding their annual holiday drive benefiting the Norton Senior Center. It's a donation drop-off day that's going to be held on Saturday, December 4th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Yale School Parking Lot. It's all for the seniors of Norton. They have so many different items, household items and personal items like dish towels, soap, cans and jellies, or goes all the way to hand lotion, lip balm, puzzle books, or you can donate gift cards to CBS. If you have any questions, please reach out to scoutsnorton@Gmail.com.
Excellent. Thank you, Christine. I have one as well. So MEED, which is an organization that provides grants to Norton teachers and schools, is hosting a clothing drive that is being held Saturday, this Saturday, November 20th, from 9:00 AM to noon at the Yale School Parking Lot, 64 West Main Street. They are accepting clothing, bedding, linens, towels, mittens, scarves, ties, socks, and other soft goods that you may no longer want. Please bag all donations in a trash bag, and separately bagged shoes will also be accepted. It's a pretty cool event that they do every year. I believe they get a donation based on the weight of the materials that are donated. So if you have particularly heavy soft goods, please bring them down. It'll be doing good for our teachers and students in town. Excellent. Very good. Town Manager, anything, any other announcements from you? No. Lucia? Yeah? Okay. We will move on to, back to your business.
Number two. We are flying through, let's keep it going.
Yeah, we're going.
Yeah.
All right. And Lucia, this, this puts you back in the hot seat, discussion and/or vote to approve the census boundaries.
Do these have to be read into the record? These have to be read into the record? All right. I, I don't, that's the question I'm asking.
Do we need to read these into record or can we just say as presented?
It's just for your approval to submit to the state. It's the final boundaries, explanation boundaries of each precinct.
And these are all available online from soon?
No, not yet. I, can I do anything until the select board has signed off on it?
So you previously, at that meeting we had before the map, approved the boundaries, and this is just the legal description?
Exactly. Sorry.
That were very interesting, creating, but.
I can imagine that it was a challenge to try to describe the line that Zigs and Zags wrote here as part of the community.
Christine, may I ask you if you can come in? There was a change on this. If you could come into Town Hall to sign, would that be a problem?
It's never a problem. I just worked till 6:30 today, so I couldn't even eat food and get there, but yes, I will. When do you need it by?
Yesterday.
I thought I was doing good signing it beforehand, too.
Excellent, but then there was, there was, there was one more change. So if you possibly get in either tomorrow by 12:30 or Monday.
Okay, I'll try to make it in tomorrow.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Of course.
Okay.
Excellent.
So can you gentlemen sign that tonight, the approval, the one for me?
Any questions on this? I think we reviewed this, I think both Mike and I were playing ban on white with the boards, so we could try to display those.
Each precinct is pretty much full at this point, right? 4,000 for limit, and where?
Precinct four is 39 and something.
36, then we go down 36, around that. So I mean, the next, the next census, if the population, if the population goes up, more than likely we're going to have to add.
Probably, yeah, precinct, right, then, yeah. Yep.
And if Jack and I are still here, something drastically went wrong.
I will not be here. Reasonably committed to that. All right. And just for folks watching while you're home, there was a very minor change to the precinct layout.
They, they had estimated a thousand, increase of 1,000 and add in a precinct, but there was only an increase of 162. So we're able to stay with the five precincts. And the legislature with district changes, they, they didn't change anything with Norton.
And this actually saves us money because obviously it keeps it manageable with election centers and all.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Excellent. So Christine, any questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Norton legal boundary precincts as proposed by the town clerk. For 2020 re-presenting, yes, thank you. Set.
And a second. Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye, two, and a yes, and we will sign that before we leave tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything else for Mr. Landres, while we're here?
One more.
One more. Thank you very much. Okay. How the town election, yes?
The town election, Mr. Chair. I request that we hold a town election on Saturday, April 30th, from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
To 4:00?
It works very good with the school. They will be sure that there are no activities going on, no sports going on outside.
Okay.
Okay? So we don't run into any problems with parking or anything.
Excellent. What is for me?
It's, that's later than usual, right? It's usually a week or two later.
A week, yeah.
Yeah, I, I really wanted it the 23rd, but I don't think the 20th, the end of the school vacation, so.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah, continually.
No.
It's a tough, tough time to have it because you have Easter that keeps dropping in, school vacation. Yeah. Great.
And Mr. Town Manager, this does, you don't see this, obviously we haven't picked a date for the town meeting or anything.
No, we did talk about that, what we're looking for for the date of town meeting.
This will fit into that.
Lucia felt this would work good with that.
Okay.
Excellent. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. Chair has entertained a motion to set the date of the town election per the recommendation of Town Clerk for Saturday, April 30th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Norton Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Two, and a yes. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucia.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
What thoughts?
I think, I think you're good.
Thank you.
All right. Next up was a discussion on a mask mandate for Norton Municipal Buildings. Haven't seen Chris Donner, our health agent, on, but I know he did send an email earlier stating that his preference would be to keep the mask mandate as is for Norton's municipal buildings, just given the recent uptick from, I think he said, 0.1% to 3% in the past few weeks, and try to get past the Thanksgiving holiday and as people move indoors. That said, open up to any discussion amongst the board members.
Yes. Christine, do you, do you have comments? Or yes, I do have comments. You know me, I can be long-winded at times.
I'll just say, I'll just say, I don't, because I don't work in a municipal building, I, I work from home, I don't know what it's like to wear a mask for eight hours a day. I understand the struggle, though, that it, it is difficult to, to deal with that, for it, especially when you're talking on the phone or talking with people in person. But I also would definitely say to keep it, at least until after the Thanksgiving holiday. I would want to force it until Christmas, but I just want to see if, if it does spike because of Thanksgiving, just, you know, with, with everything going on now that people can get their booster shots, hopefully it won't be bad, and then even after, after that, but I definitely want to just, just wait a little bit.
Thank you, Christine. Michael?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My opinion on this is, you know, it's someone who has been affected by COVID with the personal loss of my father back in December, and I sympathize and, and all that, but I've always kind of been the rule-following, regarding the state and leaving this up to the state to kind of give us the guidance on this. And right now I don't see, there's no state mandate, there's no state of emergency. The towns around us do not have a, have mandates in place for, for the municipalities, nor so, while we have it for the buildings, public buildings, municipal buildings, we don't have it for restaurants, nor my recommending that we do it for restaurants or so forth. I, I just really feel that, you know, we've been averaging, the town's been averaging prior, and they don't have this week's numbers, but we've been averaging a 0.3 to a 0.1% infection rate, which was down from the average of about 3% prior to that. I, I just don't, would, wouldn't recommend it. I would like to see the, the mandate removed at this point. And that's, you know, I think, I think the, one of the struggles that we see is we have, you know, we, we, we hear of things that are going on out in the communities and the states of increases. We just aren't seeing those increases yet. We might, I could totally, I reserve my right to change my mind, but right now I don't support a mandate within municipal buildings. I think it's a tough atmosphere, and I, I think with schools being, I know the schools alone have been over 70% vaccination rates, and I know they're struggling as well with some of the DESI mandates that are, that are in place, which I don't believe a, a state agency, I believe a state agency should really take the feedback of the local school committees, and I would support anything our school committees think is best for our schools regarding that. So I wouldn't, right now, with the numbers where they are and so forth, I wouldn't support a municipal building mandate.
Yeah. So just for, since Chris can't be here today, I can read and, that's appropriate, right? So read his note? All right. So this is from Health Agent Chris Donner. Good afternoon. Well, as we've seen with this pandemic over the past 20 months or so, things can change very quickly. Last week I had sent you an email suggesting that the cases have been quiet enough in town and that it was my feeling that we could maybe make the mask mandates in Town Hall and municipal buildings into a strong recommendation. However, since then, our numbers in town have began, began to rise substantially. It appears as though the indoor Halloween parties and other indoor events are beginning to work against us. My concern now has turned to Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years and all the indoor gatherings that go along with these holidays. So at this point, I'm going to withdraw my recommendation from my email last week of eliminating the mandate, and now recommend that the mandate stay in place until the end of January. This will hopefully get us past all the major holidays. I realize that Chris is not here to speak with us. I think his email is, is pretty clear, and my personal stance is to trust the person who's living it on a daily basis. So if that's Chris's recommendation, I'm, I'm fine with that. Also, I believe he has the unilateral ability to levy a mandate. That's why the signs say per order of the Board of Health. So perhaps we can invite him back for a conversation after the holidays, and we can discuss this further. All right. Excellent. On happier news, discussion and/or vote to allow the Girl Scouts to use the Town Common for cookie booths for 2021 and 2022. I don't even know if we need any discussion on that. I think that's a, would be a brilliant idea.
Could we add more dates?
Which, which days will they have their pin mints?
And they did it last year, and it was very successful, so again, they're really nervous about going door to door, so, so I'll help them out a little bit.
The dates that they are, oh, go ahead, Christine?
I was just gonna ask, Mike, do you remember if it's multiple troops that are doing it? Or is it just like the, I don't know how many troops there are in town, or is it multiple troops?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. Christine? Yes. I believe you said it could be multiple, but I could have misunderstood. You're just gonna try and beat that many dates and times to try and get everyone a rotating food. Got it. Yeah, because I definitely would want to see, you know, not just give it to one troop. Let all the troops share, because it's a great spot. Like you guys said, it's been so successful, so, thank you.
Is Allison on the call?
That I see. Do not see. My only observation is that I think it's very unfortunate that the Girl Scouts make their troops do this in the coldest part of the year, from December twelfth through February twelfth. Not very nice for being outdoor, even going door to door. But such is what they have to do.
I think it's winter survival badge, too. I think they might.
There we go, build a snowman. So the dates that have been proposed for cookie sales on the Town Common are Saturdays from nine AM to three PM. That would be December twelfth, January fifteenth, January twenty-ninth, February twelfth, with rain dates of January twenty-second and February fifth. So there's no further discussion. Chair would entertain a motion to allow the Girl Scouts to use the Town Common for cookie booths on the dates proposed for twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Happy and sorry to interrupt, but Renee did join the meeting.
Oh, wonderful, welcome, Renee. I'll say that was seven fifty. Excellent. So Renee, just to catch you up as to where we are, item number five under new business, allowing Girl Scouts to use the Town Common for cookie booths for the remainder of this year and through February of twenty-twenty-two. So we have a motion and a second. We'll go to the roll. Renee?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
To, we'll say I'm a Michael-tool-level enthusiastic, yes.
Aye, there we go.
Excellent. Moving on to number six, a discussion on Norton Wireless Internet Service Plan, which sounds very exciting. Mr. Town Manager.
Okay, this is a proposal that Jason Benjamin would like to talk to the board about, that he's been working on, and I think Jason is on so he can discuss it.
Yes, hello.
Evening, Jason, thank you for joining us tonight.
Sure. I will share my screen so that you guys can see the plan that we put together here.
Jason, thank you very much for your patience also on this presentation. I know you've had it for a while, and we've kind of bumped you once or twice.
Oh, sure, that's fine, yeah, no problem. All right.
I think last time I particularly agree just because we bumped him when we were in his house.
No, exactly.
All right, take a closer.
Can everyone see that now?
I could lie to you and say yes, my eyes are just not what they used to be.
It is a little, little hard to see.
All right, I will, I'll just read it to you. Basically, as far as the overview goes, our, with this study, our goal was to build a robust and scalable wireless system that would grant Norton citizens an additional competitive option for broadband that is more affordable, more accessible, and more responsive to their needs. To this end, we are currently engaged in an ongoing study to assess the technology, establish a functional test node, purchase end-user on-premise equipment, and benchmark real-world broadband throughput speeds and offer a private service to local businesses. So our first test node located at the water tower at twenty-four Cottage Street is fully functional, installed, and offering test speeds of up to eighty megabits per second to a coverage area within a radius of two miles of the test node site. So this demonstrates that we have achieved proof of concept. Our current near-term goal is to sign up more businesses and individuals to take advantage of this new wireless capacity. We have many stakeholders who have expressed or demonstrated active interest in the project. They include Norton's Light Board, Norton Cable Access, Norton Water Department, and the Norton Planning Department. And the scope of the project would be the phase buildout of two to three locally situated wireless nodes within town boundaries. These are high-elevation power locations that can provide line-of-sight view shed coverage to hundreds of residences within a circumscribed two to three mile proximity of each tower site. Each node has a defined subscriber capacity. We've selected hardware that has a capacity of a hundred subscribers per transmitter, and each node would have six transmitters for a total of six hundred subscribers per node. And the end goal of this buildout of wireless nodes would be to provide up to eighteen hundred subscribers with a broadband capacity at a fixed low cost of fifty percent of what is currently available from the existing provider broadband cable platform. At present, we have approximately six thousand or fifteen subscribers in the town of Norton who purchase bundled internet and cable TV services. Our target subscriber capacity of eighteen hundred subscribers for this project would represent a coverage percentage capacity of thirty percent of current subscribers who would have access to this new broadband option. And in regards to service deliverables, the goal of the project would be to provide target broadband speeds between fifty to eighty megabits per second for our subscribers. The current 3G and 4G cell networks are now providing an average of twenty to thirty megabits per second for their cell phone customers. And so our target data rates are double that with the currently offered cell wireless environment. This would provide plenty of bandwidth for the current business, personal, and educational requirements of today's users at a fraction of the current Norton subscriber cost. So basically, and I'll end with this before I open it up to questions, our objectives would be to install two to three tower sites with wireless transmitter and antenna equipment, purchase subscriber on-premise equipment, market the services to Norton residents, hire installation technicians to install the equipment at subscriber locations, and implement a billing platform and hire customer service staff. So I have outlined all of the roles and responsibilities, the deliverables, and a multi-phase schedule or buildout of the various nodes along with a projected budget and projected ROI.
Ready for questions?
Okay, can you focus on the ROI a bit?
Certainly. So basically, if we were to max capacity under this plan of eighteen hundred subscribers at fifty dollars a month flat, our annual income would ultimately reach a million per year. So if we, as an example, anticipate a rate of six hundred new subscribers per year, by the end of year four, we would achieve ROI. So this is something that would be self-funding, essentially, once we had it built out. That would be the plan.
And what would it take, I mean, the max capacity of only eighteen hundred seems lower than I would anticipate? Like what, what would the anticipated increases be? Like, is it pretty much equal? If we wanted to double capacity, would you be looking at the same amount of towers and similar monthly fees?
Yeah, I mean, you are, you are kind of limited to the number of tower locations that there are available in town, and who would be willing to lease us access on those towers. We're lucky to have been able to put our test node on the water tower, and the water department was very cooperative with that. But, you know, it just depends on the space that's available on the towers, and those towers do already have, you know, quite a bit of equipment on them, so. And additionally, you know, for us to think that we could do something that a multi-multi-million dollar company is currently doing, I think we may be overly ambitious. I think, you know, at a third of what the current subscribership is would be, would be pretty, would be pretty good. But like, to answer your question, you could scale it, if you wanted to.
Okay, and then in respect to, so thinking about the customers, right, and the competition, for the location of the towers, is this offering any additional benefit to those who don't have good service right now? Or they would opt to leave at larger provider?
I don't, I wouldn't say that, because the package throughput speed that we would be able to offer would be something, like I said, within the range of fifty to eighty, which would be equivalent to what their entry-level package is now. And I think a lot of people in town probably have higher data packages, so this would not be for them. It would be to provide a more alternative, affordable option to people because there is no other option. And I think that's something that kind of kindled this to begin with, was the question, why can't we have competition in the town of Norton?
Yeah, and would this help, too, Jason, with the 3G repowerment that they're doing across multiple businesses? Like, if somebody were using that right now, could they then opt to use this service once the 3G is no longer available?
Yeah, certainly. And the thing that, you know, I was telling businesses to get them to sign on to this was, you don't have to get rid of who you have now in order to try ours out. You can have them both on concurrently if you want to. So there's no, you know, problem with, you know, switching. And something, if it works for you, great, and if not, you know, you can stick with who you have. But I just also wanted to point out, as far as our budget is concerned, what we spent on the study aboard, we spent a total of sixteen thousand dollars between the actual installation on the tower and all of the on-premise equipment and the engineering. So I think we have a pretty good idea of what each node's gonna cost based on what we've already achieved. And just as an example, I'm talking to you now on that tower connection. So it definitely works.
Mr. Chairman, Michael? So that's great, that it's, that's, that's in Cottage Street, so that's in the Charlie area. I mean, have you guys, I know this is a test, and you want to see, see how long it works. Have you guys started to identify where you would look for this? Because I, you know, right off the top of my head, I'm thinking of the Trinitarian. They used to have a cell tower in their steeple, and they left, and that place has been empty forever. Would that be something, like, if that's the area, would that help our park, you'd want to make them or so forth? Or do you know where that is?
Yeah, absolutely, certainly, and that would be a possible tower location. Then we have the newer water tower that was more recently built.
Yep.
But the one thing to understand is this is entirely line-of-sight based. So you have to aim your antenna specifically at an area, and then you get a two-mile radius view shed for that actual coverage. And so if you're outside of that, you're not gonna get it. And if you can't see the tower from where you are, you're not gonna get it. So there are some limitations, and those are the same limitations with the density that's in this area that are preventing other competitors from coming in because they don't want to build out unless they can, you know, capture a significant chunk of the business. So that's kind of keeping them out of it.
So we, I'm sure you've learned a lot about foliage and the thickness of foliage.
Absolutely, absolutely. Another thing that's interesting about this is that the actual on-premise equipment for the customer is a radio that's literally like maybe this tall. And I learned that you could actually, it doesn't have to even be outside of the building. It can be inside of the building, you can have it inside of an attic. It'll penetrate through walls very easily. So it gives a lot of flexibility for that.
Great. Any other questions, Christine, Michael, or Renee?
Yeah. Is the targeted consumer the residents or businesses or both?
Both.
Okay.
Mr. Town Manager?
Jason, I know, I was looking at today, I believe, some of the federal funding. There's a lot of talk about increasing high-speed internet, and it looked like the requirement was a hundred megabytes per second.
Yes, that is, that is, that would be the federal requirement.
Okay.
That's correct. So this is something that with the, with the current, with the current subscriber capacity of this equipment and what we're feeding it, I don't think we could do a hundred. And I think it would cost a significant amount over and above what I'm proposing here. This is a much cheaper way to do it, but if we had the benefit of federal funding, we would certainly have to match those criteria. But we'd have more money to do it.
Would that be worth doing a study to see if, perhaps, even increasing the cost of the project to secure the infrastructure funds from that recently passed bill? That may be worth it if it enables us to get those grants?
Yeah, the only other thing with the federal grants is that if you take that money, then you basically have to have a shared carrier status with your tower. So we would have to share whatever we had with anyone, any other carrier that wanted to use it.
I see. There's always a rub there with the federal government. It's never easy.
Yes. Yeah, so we would retain a lot more independence when it came to, you know, putting out a project like this. And this is called, in the industry, this is called a WISP, or, you know, Wireless Internet Service Provider. And they're typically done at a very small micro scale, you know, smaller communities that have, you know, issues with density and so forth.
I think this is a fantastic idea. Can't tell you how many times I've seen people clamoring for additional wireless internet options in town. So this really would be meeting an unmet need. I have a couple of questions on how this would be structured. I guess, who ultimately runs the program? Would it be the, I guess, Norton Media Center, or is it the town? And where exactly does the ownership and management of this fall?
I would, I would think you would want to do something, like create an enterprise account for this and have, and set up a separate board to oversee it, just like you would do with the library or the media center or any other entity of that type.
So you don't think this would, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. The, right now, and I'm gonna go blank on the name of the committee, the internet slash, Mike, what's the name of the committee that we have in town?
We have Mr. Cordon.
The Cable Advisory?
The Cable Advisory Board. You'd probably see some board like that, maybe beefed up a little bit or so forth, that might take that on as an enterprise managing this.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to, you know, have the right people in place to be able to oversee that and, you know, maybe have some background in that. But that'd be a brute uptake, but that's up to you guys.
How is this being managed and maintains today? I know you've just done your phase one study successfully, and it looks like maybe started out phase two. Is it, I guess, I'm curious, who's involved? Is it, is it just yourself at this point?
Yeah, it's just myself and the board. You know, we were tasked with looking into this, and so we, you know, put our best foot forward and put together a plan and executed that plan, and now we have a proof of concept. So at this point, it's just a question of, is this something the town really wants? Is this something the town needs? Would it make a big difference in terms of, you know, services that were available? Or should we pause and wait for the federal government to roll out, you know, more infrastructure funding, you know, a few years down the line and take that approach? I mean, there's a lot of different ways you could look at it.
Jason, I'm sorry, just because I'm gonna ask a question, and you may just look at me because I just don't know the technology. Is this a way, is there a way to send the signal to kind of a booster that could get the signal going farther than two miles? Is there, is there a way to get that signal where I'm not blocked by trees or a line of sight, but we're able to boost it to a receiver? Say there was a receiver on telephone poles that basically could push the signal down? And that, you know, like I said, I don't know the technology, but is that, is my off-base on thinking this way? Or is there future technologies that we could maybe adapt on to this just from, just what you're seeing? Meaning I?
Yeah, well, that is, how you're describing it is actually how it works. The problem is that once you, if we started putting these on telephone poles, then you have, you know, access issues to the poles itself and ownership of the poles.
Yep.
And that kind of a thing, and that gets way more complicated once you start doing that. If you keep it to central nodes that are delivered from towers. If you keep it to central nodes that are delivered from tower locations, then you have more control over it. And, you know, you can certainly add more nodes to each tower to change the location and the pitch and the direction of that signal. So.
Okay.
Jackson, how many?
Yes, Renee, please.
Jason, I like the idea too of having some additional options in town, but do we, do we have an understanding of, you know, given kind of like the, the direct line of sight connection that you'd have to have, like what, what does the potential customer base look like?
Well, you would, you would literally have to take, you're looking at a map, a satellite map of the town, and you're taking your, your points on the map and you're saying, I can take this antenna and I can move it in this direction and I can hit this cluster of housing developments or, you know, this apartment complex and I can send a signal to 100 people within that area from one of those antennas. And that's in one specific cardinal direction. And then as you add more, you know, within a 360-degree radius, then you can encounter more. But you're still limited in terms of the mileage away from that tower site.
And you said right now, is it two towers or two antennas that you're looking at?
Um, yeah, we'd be looking at maybe two to three.
And do you have locations for those already?
Um, well, we would, I'm making the assumption that the Water Department would continue to want to work with, with us and help us add tower locations on the existing water towers, of which there, we know there are two. Mike also mentioned the Trinitarian Church. I was looking for some, you know, lease access over there. And there are other smaller towers that could be, you know, affixed or we could even put up our own tower. But, um, yeah, that would very easily cover the two to three in this plan.
Is it possible to, to get an idea based on those potential locations on how many people would have an opportunity to switch to this, just to kind of understand more about the return on investment and, you know, just to understand what that coverage area would look like? Or if there might be additional funding to put up a new tower somewhere else that might have a denser population?
Well, there's not really, when I was looking at the map to plan this, I didn't see a lot of huge cluster areas that we could target. They were kind of very disparate, you know, across the map. So it's not something that, you know, you could just put up one and point it and be done. It's more dispersed. And then you're limited to the actual access points will only serve a maximum of 100 subscribers without being oversubscribed at that data rate. So if you want to promise a data rate, you have to make sure that everyone in that area can get that data rate.
Okay, so what would the projected, like target look like? So if you want, how would you vote to potentially have 300 available folks in there, assuming that a third of them would sign up?
Um, we would want to get 600 per tower. So I, I feel like, I feel like 600 a tower is your less big. So if we did three, then that's, that's where we get the 1,800 from.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks.
So Jason, what are you looking for from us tonight to help you move forward? Think this is a fantastic idea, definitely one worth exploring further.
Yeah, I guess just if it's something that you want to explore further, that we, you know, we're paying the, the cable access boards, paying $1,000 a month for the incoming circuit to feed that tower. So if it's not something that we're going to do for a while, then we would probably want to stop paying that on a monthly basis. But it's, if it's something we want to continue to explore, then I would think we would need something along the lines of the establishment of a new committee, the establishment of an enterprise account, that's maybe a special town meeting, appropriate funding for the capitalization of the project itself, with the understanding that within four years we would have a return on investment and then, you know, ongoing incoming revenue stream to support it, meaning at that point it'd be self-supported and not supported by, you know, taxpayer dollars. So that would be kind of the route for that, I would think.
So Mike, if we didn't want to go down that route, what does that look like?
As far as?
I'm assuming if we're talking about setting up a, a new enterprise account and a new board, that sounds to me like a charter change. Obviously, to Jason's point, town meeting and appropriation of funds and-
Election process, it's charter change, election process, it's charter change.
Yeah. And maybe, Jason, you could take Google Earth and where you have the towers now, do a two-mile radius and we can see how many homeowners are in that area, how many businesses, and get a better idea on potential?
Yes. And the nice thing too, I mean, having, having 123 being the location of many of our businesses in town, it's a lot easier to cover that area, not with the geography, at least from a business standpoint.
Mr. Chairman, does, you know, I'm looking at some of the proposals here and they don't seem, I mean, they're expensive, but they're not out of whack. Is there any advantage to getting Wheaton involved here sooner than later? Because obviously, right there, that's a, that's a big customer right there. And, and onboarding someone like that, if you could get something at the Trinitarian, shooting, aim it right at Wheaton, you probably could get a lot of, a lot of customers. But I don't want to take away from residents either. But is it, the question is, is there a balance of working with Wheaton to make, like?
Let me sit with Jason and we'll go over all this and then see if there is a way that we can incorporate.
Yeah, I mean, if it makes sense financially and doesn't take away from the project to get services to more residents.
And we'll come back with, you know, the steps that would have to be taken.
So, I mean, just a few moments ago, we set the April election. So we have that followed by a town meeting. So if this is something that you feel that we could get-
Get a subcommittee going.
Yeah, develop to the point where we can do, you know, public information sessions and get the word out to build the support needed to do something like this, I would 1,000% support it and do whatever I can to, to help you. I think this is a really forward-thinking piece of work. I'm very thankful for you guys for doing that. All right. So it sounds like we'll be hearing a lot more from you in the coming weeks and months.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jason.
Mike, can you, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mike, can you make sure they get on, Jason was back with an update possibly in a month from now, just with some measurables on what the next steps are or, you know, just the layout of the plan or what it would look like? The elections in April's meeting, I mean, the town meeting and the elections that have come on us very quickly.
Yep. And Jason, before you dip out, if you could just send this document electronically, that would be phenomenal. I'd really like to share this around and start getting people excited about the possibility. All right?
Definitely.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up in the hot seat, I believe that's Renee and Mike for review discussion and/or vote on the post-community agreement templates.
Great, thank you, Jack.
We're your alum.
What was that?
Nothing. We just noticed he made it's a 820 kickoff.
Oh.
As I picked up-
You got to go fast.
As I picked up 25 pages of documents. Sorry.
Mike is supposed to be running out.
I know.
I apologize to the citizens as I'm thinking of the Patriots doing their work.
Who doesn't get excited about, about watching Mac Jones slice up the fans?
Absolutely.
Renee, if you don't mind, did you ever get an email with some questions I had about the HCA template?
I don't recall an email from you.
All right, it was, no, no, it's okay. It was sitting in my outbox and then I really looked for it and it disappeared. So if questions come up, I might pick you up another time, but I had like a bunch of questions, but it's okay.
Okay, do you want me to search my inbox and see?
No, I kept getting stuff in the outbox, so I don't know where it went. It's okay.
Okay. So anything that, anything you have, let me know.
There it is.
And if somebody else applies to the game.
Renee missed it.
They're watching the game.
We're not watching the game. We are focusing. All right. So Renee, please take us through the agreement templates.
Yeah, did everybody have a chance to read it or do we need to go through page by page?
Definitely don't need to go through page by page if you want to provide a-
Level of skill.
Yeah, high-level summary.
Sure, yeah, let me, let me give a high-level summary and just talk about why some of the changes occurred. So the last post-community agreement template we have, I believe, is from April of 2020. It was the first one that we did. So through the last couple of years, new marijuana establishments have been added, some things have changed, and, and we've just learned by, you know, being in the industry longer, of some benefits due to some language changes. So most of what's in the document is from KP Law and their updated post-community agreement in relation to delivery courier. So there's a lot of language around the, the delivery courier and operator because those did not exist initially when we developed the HCA. There's also some changes, just, you know, basic changes in, in respect to, I don't know the best way to put this, but I guess how we, how we look at and how we understand that, like the community benefit payment, so, you know, in respect to the delivery courier, for example, it's including things like the delivery fee that's paid is part of the gross revenue and determining what the 3% community benefit payment might be. Additionally, there was some language in there that just wasn't there before in local sales tax, nothing that, that changes, but it aligns to the state as well as to a bylaw that we approved several years ago at town meeting. One of the changes I think that, I wish that we had known about earlier is under the other costs, you know, we spent a lot of time negotiating these and working with town council through the process, and so we've added a paragraph just that, where the company would reimburse us for the attorney fees that, that are incurred while we're negotiating the HCA. So I think that that helps us, you know, just to make sure that as we try to bring in new business, that, you know, our legal fees aren't increasing because of, of the need for us to, to review this with the town. Additionally, let me just see if there's anything here. We have some changes just to have better terminology under vendors in employment and, excuse me, just one second, Jeff. And allowed hiring of new employees. I'm just scrolling through here to take a look. In respect to security, we, we had a couple of conversations with Chief Park. Initially, he provided us a, a, a really requirement that the, the town and Martin Police Department has. Those were specific to retail establishments, and so we've worked to just incorporate those into the HCA for any establishment that may come in the town. So that was added as an addendum or an amendment within the HCA itself. Also too, under some obligations, we put in some more specific language about timelines so that we make sure that companies that we engage into an agreement with are diligently pursuing their licenses, permits, et cetera. So there's specific requirements in respect to the, the time of completing certain tasks after we execute the HCA. I think that that, initially under, oh, I did want to mention this, under the odor control technology, so one of the things that, that we identified during, like our information sessions with the public were really the concerns around the odor mitigation in respect to cultivation manufacturing facilities. So we were back and we, we worked with KP Law to really beef up that language to make sure that we identified what type of HVAC system should be installed. We talked about complaints, how complaints would be handled, and then the ability of the board to terminate the HCA based on a certain number of complaints that were received. So it just allows us to have a little more control, given, you know, some of, some of the other experiences that towns have, have had specific cultivation facilities and odor within the area, so we added that information in there too. What I did want to mention, and this is separate, Mike and I had a meeting today actually with KP Law and, and about a related issue, but there are two additional changes, and I'm going to share my screen here if you guys don't mind. Somewhat minor changes, but based on just some conversations that we had that we wanted to include in the updated HCA. Give me one second here. I'll share my screen and I'll read this. So there's, there's two items. One is specific to under the employment. So initially, what we had here is that when they hired a new employee, that they would advertise and hold a hiring event for Norton residents. We wanted to clarify that this is like upon commencement of operations, so it wasn't like, you know, if a year into their operations, they had a position open for a new employee, they wouldn't have to have a hiring event for Norton residents. So we made some clarification there. And then additionally, under the odor mitigation, we just put in, it's, you know, while we would do this anyway, we put this in so that companies feel more comfortable at the fact that if we do receive a complaint, the town will notify the company directly. So we added that in under odor control as well. Just those two minor items would be just additional changes from what you guys initially reviewed. And with that, I'll ask if there are any questions.
Mr. Chairman. Renee, that's, I like what the wording that you had, the town will notify the company upon receipt of complaints. Is that in writing? Is that verbal, right? And we receive complaints, social media, you know, I mean, it's, you guys don't, you guys defined it, what a complaint, what a, what a-
No, I would think it would be any way we get them.
Okay.
People call anonymously, or people sending a letter, email, whatever.
Okay.
I would say that anonymous complaints, perhaps not. I believe we've all heard some of the voicemails that got left in Jim's voicemail box on Monday mornings, that I wouldn't say that they're quite actionable. So I think perhaps a bit more detail on that would be beneficial.
Well, Jack, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we do anything with it, it just says, I mean, you basically give it an anonymous complaint. I think the company should be aware of it, right? Because there's still somebody who is making accusations to the company. So I, I think it's still our obligation to tell them that we received it, even if we don't have to find it, or, you know, in the next paragraph, we talk about that if we receive three or more complaints, the board has, has the ability to have the company and talk about it, you know, enforce the mitigation plan and then terminate the HCA if needed. So we could always, under, under that, if we don't believe that a complaint is, what's the word I want, legitimate, we don't have to take action on it. But I do think that even if somebody leaves something anonymously, that we should notify the company that we've received it.
Yep, I, I hear what you're saying. I think, I'm probably getting hung up on a very small piece of this, so I'm willing to, to let that go. One thing I do see looking at that is the use of the word "shall." So in the second line of that second paragraph, the company shall be required.
Yes.
Thank you. "Shall" tends to be a very tricky word when it comes to contracts, where it's, you should but don't have to. So I don't, I would perhaps ask KP Law if that should be changed to a must or should or may, just "shall," just-
Yeah, we, we can ask. I think, I think "shall" in that legal term is a little bit different than "shall otherwise."
I would agree with Jack. It's, there's a lot of debate right now about "shall."
It goes, it goes either way. Some people would read that and say, yes, you have, you're, you shall be required, but legally, "shall" does not mean "must."
Yes.
So if it's "must be required," then I would just say we should probably put "must be required."
We'll go back to it, Jack. "Shall" is all over the document, so.
I remember two of my questions. So I think I asked this when we had the Latin Green Ladies come and talk, but the part about the police officer training, and it says like the company will pay for the training or shall pay for the training, whatever it is, that's split like amongst all companies that have HCA's, correct? Or, or- that have HDA's correct or, or career licenses or however it may be.
It's not, it's not that it would, it would go chronologically based on the HDA and, and we've, you'll see that language is a bit different in other HDA's. We can, we can certainly go back and add something in that regard. Let me, let me stop sharing for a second and I can read you a potential solution to that. Give me one second.
I mean, when Renee's looking that up, that's a hard one because we don't know if we're going to end up with five or six companies that are licensed in town to deliver, to cultivate, whatever. So, but we really need someone trained when the first ones come in. So it's hard to say, well, we're going to divide it by 10, we don't know.
Oh, yeah. No, and I, I, I totally agree. Just the wording, not that it was vague, but it was more like if I was the company and I was opening up one, I'd read that and be like, so I have to pay for every police officer to get all the training, but there's another place that's going to open up in two months and they don't have to pay for anything? So that's the only thing I'm thinking of. I totally get that they should be paying for the training. It's just, I, I kind of just want to understand more how, how are they paying for the training?
Yeah. So Christine, the way that the default way it's worded is that they're going to, they're going to pay for the actual cost for a police officer to complete the training and then for recertification, right? So that's a separate expert. What we, what we could include in here is a line in the template that says, costs are incurred chronologically based upon the date of other agreements with the town in Norton. And then what that would do is, so the first HDA that, that we enter into, that company would be responsible for the first police officer. Should that police officer leave or should we find that we as a town need another police officer in that capacity, then we, we would go to the second HDA, right? And so on and so forth. So we can, we can add that in if, if, if we use the board. I mean, I, I don't think that that's an issue and I think that it would, it would define it more for those companies, but, you know, we don't, we don't want to not set the expectation that, that may be needed, but we just don't know, right? Like we can't predict if an officer is trained and then that officer for whatever reason leaves the department and then we have another need to do it, you know? I mean, hopefully it wouldn't, it wouldn't occur over and over again and we'd have some longevity in, in whoever it was that received that training, but that might, does that kind of help your concern of how it's, it's shared, but it's not shared for each, for each one? Like, like if a company fulfilled this obligation, we would not go back to them and ask them to support that again?
Yeah, it would just be, like you said, if, if a police officer were to leave and then, so like say, say we had three officers for three HCA's that are all, and they're all trained, each one of them paid for an officer. One of the officer that leaves was the second one that got an HCA. So that HCA would then have to pay for a new officer? Essentially, that's what it would say?
No, 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 because it just says that they do it for one police officer, right? No, what it would say is that if an officer leaves, another one needs to be trained and whoever entered into the agreement for the fourth HDA, if there were one, would incur the cost. If not, then it would be a cost the town incurred.
Okay.
And we wouldn't keep going back.
Yeah. No, I get it. I get it. I just, I don't agree, but that's okay. That's just a, a minor thing, I think. And then my other thing, which I guess is a little more, I thought that was going to be an easy question, but this was a little, I think even more challenging. So it, it goes with the, the annual charitable nonprofit contributions. So my concern is with being on the EDC for like a month with you guys and then hearing it on the select board side, I think I've heard three different HCA's come in so far, HCA's on courier groups come in. And two of them, when they, you know, thought of this, they were mentioning the charitable contribution, they both said food banks. Now, that's fantastic that they both want to give to the food banks, but I personally would like to see diversity in the charitable contributions.
Yeah, Christine, that's already changed in there. So what we have, let me read you the language. We, we changed that in each HDA, but we accounted for it in here. And, and the reason was because we, we identified the same thing, especially during COVID, everybody chose the food bank, but the food bank had been receiving so many donations. So what we did is, is we changed it from reading that they would, they shall annually contribute to any nonprofit or charitable organization to read, they would annually contribute to public local charities, nonprofit organizations in the town, and then said, said charities, nonprofit organizations to be determined by the company and approved by the town. So they would, they would suggest something and then work with us on if that was the need. And if it wasn't, then, you know, we could, we could provide an alternate.
Okay, perfect. That's a good one.
Yeah.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Sure. Any other?
Just a follow-up question on that. So when it says the town, would that be the select board or the town manager or, and I think if there's another, another level of specificity that we could put in there just to make it clear?
Who would you like it to be with? I would prefer the, the town manager, but I mean, the town is just general, the town manager bringing it to the board. If you put the select board, it's typically approved.
Yeah, I, I don't have a preference. I'm open to whatever your recommendations are. It is, pardon, Jesus, terrible grammar.
We're signing it.
Yep.
So, but, and they enter the contract would be, the contract would be, the agreement would be with the select board?
It's with, with the town that the select board enters into as the executive branch. Maybe I'm splitting hairs.
We can change it, however, you know, how we want to read it, certainly accept.
I'm also willing to accept that my point is really inconsequential in the scheme of things, so I'm not advocating for a change just as a point of discussion.
Okay. And just, just so you know, Jeff, when we say the town on here, there's that notification section and the town is identified as the town manager.
Okay.
So for any sort of notifications like a consent request or approval, it goes to the town manager. So we can, we can put here like, you know, to the town with, you know, discussion with the select board or approval of the select board. I think, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, did I know we did one a long time ago, but I, I think we left it more general so we didn't attach a formal process to it?
Correct.
Right? Because we wanted, we wanted to have more open dialogue with the company.
If that is the intended piece, I have absolutely no problem with that. Cool. Any other questions for Renee? Alrighty. So did I hear that we'll, there's a few questions for KP Law to come back on before we vote on this?
Yeah, I think just the use of, of the word shall. Was there anything else?
Don't think so.
I don't think so.
Alright.
I'll get you, I'll get you a cool copy of those two additional changes that we talked through today and then I'll shoot some emails and I can get an answer. And Jen, is Jen on?
Yes.
Jen, okay. If we can put on the agenda for next, for next meeting, that'd be great.
Alright.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Appreciate your time.
Thanks Renee. Great work. Alright, rolling on. Another oft deferred topic discussion on the October 25th fall annual town meeting.
Was that five months ago?
Feels like it.
Yeah.
So, yep. I can't recall who had asked for that to be on the agenda. There was a specific intent on that?
I don't know, but I do have one thing from it that I just would like to have a discussion about or what I work on.
Take it away.
One of the big points was Mr. Francis's article regarding water. And what came up, one of the things that came from that, that a lot of people were shocked and surprised about was the $100 per day fine. After doing a little investigation on that, the town does not have a bylaw saying $100 per day. It is part of the Title V regulations and the sewer regulations that defaults to $100 per day. Because we have not adopted a fine mechanism within the bylaw, a fine structure within our bylaws, it automatically defaults to the Title V portion of the law. So one of the things that I've reached out to KP Law to see what kind of wording they have that we might be able to change the bylaw that would make it more reflective. I think we all agree not hooks, someone, a septic system just pouring into a ground is worldly different than someone not hooking up to water. And the $100 a fine per day is, I think everyone agreed that that was a little steep and a little out of control. So that, for me, that was the only thing that, there were a couple of the takeaways that from the town meeting, but that was the most important to focus on, try to get changed for the town.
Does it say that someone who fails to connect shall be fined $100 a day?
I'll check into this word shall, Jack.
Anything else on the, the town meeting?
Jack, I know I sent an email on this and I can't remember exactly what item it was. I think though in general, we should have conversation about the town meeting and, you know, making sure that we as a board, whether we split this up across the board or have a representative on, you know, an entire warrant. But, you know, when, when the language is read at the meeting, especially when, you know, people have a paper on front of them, it doesn't meet, that doesn't match what's actually being read, to be moved on the floor. Like I think that we as a board should always make sure that if somebody isn't representing the article, that we should provide a summary of the article and discussion on, with the board, what the board's recommendation was. I know in the past too, you know, we've, we've handed out, and I can't remember if it was handed out with this last one, but the decisions between the board, the planning board and FinCom on, you know, recommendations for the articles and the warrant. But I, I think that we should take a more active leadership approach during the meetings and provide just summaries or general information on the articles and how it came to us or with the discussion points, you know, a couple of the key items of the discussion points should be, so that there's more, more engagement and more, I guess, surety that there's understanding of, of what the actual articles are.
Sounds almost like it could be, like with the Supreme Court, you have the majority opinion and if there's a dissenting opinion, they could present that as well?
Yeah, yeah. You know, and, and we've done it, like, you know, I'll take the marijuana stuff for example, right? Like every time that those articles have come up, like as part of My role in EDC, like I, I always provided some context, right? Because it's, it's not always clear when somebody sees something and certainly, you know, folks don't, don't know like the amount of time, hours or meetings where things have been reviewed, you know? That, I guess I'll kind of equate it to Jack at the, at the meeting when you spoke on the change for the speed limit, right? Like we, we were asked at several meetings about doing something more within the town and that was an item that, you know, could potentially help mitigate the issues.
Yep. No, I, I'm personally all for that. I think that's a great idea, the more information that we can share. Absolutely. And the, it's funny you mentioned the speed limit. You saw that North Alvaro adopted the universal speed limit, speed law just last week.
And it's, it's funny, they really are almost a parallel town to us in just every issue going forward. And I would also recommend, I know we, we tried to do that once before. It's something that I think is imperative of this town. I think we should keep trying to bring it up and, you know, every so often revisiting the issue.
I, I think we probably underestimated the concern that that would come. So we probably were underprepared or the level of discussion that that item was.
Absolutely.
Certainly wouldn't mind taking another one at that and being able to explain that a bit better.
Absolutely.
And I just have a question. I think I've tried to ask it before and I just kind of want a little more clarity, if anybody doesn't mind. In regards to citizens petition, do we as a select board have to vote on whether or not we support it? Like are we legally bound to add our support to a citizen's petition?
Just because it's a petition by citizens, you mean?
Correct.
No.
No.
No, I, I, it's been up here on the war regardless. I, I think Christine, our obligation as elected officials is, is to vote, you know, what we think is in the best interest of the town based on the knowledge and information that's presented to us. Because again, I, you know, I, it's not like everybody's involved in, you know, four or five hour meetings on particular topics, right?
Yeah. So my thing with that is I, like we, we, we show up to the town meetings, you know, as long as we can make it. We show up to a town meeting and we vote there. That should be our vote. Like we shouldn't, there's, I think having them come and present to us is great because that we're like supposed to be like the, the voice of the town and they should be able to come and express their, their viewpoint and we, we should just, in my personal opinion, I think as a select board should just kind of take that in and then we make our own decisions at the actual town meeting. We don't need to make a decision at, at that moment to vote to support it or not. That's just my personal opinion. I, we can continue with the way, I don't, I honestly don't know if this is just a tradition that we voted on citizen petitions or the way, I don't know if it was legal that we had to do it this way, but that's just, I'm just throwing that out there.
It's, I think it's Christine, it's our obligation, like we, we own the, the town meetings, right? We own the town meeting warrant. So there's, there's an expectation of the board, of the select board and the, and the chief, chief executive of officers in the town that we should be opining on things that come before us, whether it's from a citizen or whether it's from the town manager or another board. Like there's, there's, there should, there should still be opinions of the boards that are presented in, presented to the town and then, you know, however you want to vote. I mean, you're voting as a resident, not necessarily an elected official.
Mike?
Okay. I, I see it a little differently, but we don't, we don't have to argue about it because it's not going to change, so it's okay. You know, I, I just, I don't believe that it's, it's necessary because yes, we are elected officials, but I, I don't, if it's going to, so somebody like, like Michael's warrants, uh, Michael's warrants, Michael's articles, he took those off. We can't take off a citizen's petition. So it's going to be stuck on there regardless. So I, I just, that's where I come from, from, from that side. But that's, I just wanted more clarity on this, if we needed to actually legally binding had to do it.
Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to say the simplest thing, and I know in my town it's done, the finance committee does it, not the board of selectmen, but someone, the chair of the finance committee on every article stands up and says, the finance committee voted four to three in support of this article. And you could do the same on every article at town meeting. Once it's moved, you could just stand up and say, I just wanted to let you know, the board of selectmen voted four to one in favor of this article.
So, Mike?
Just, just point of information. Christine, I, I did not withdraw those. I, I requested that they be withdrawn to the select, select board. I didn't personally withdraw them because I can't, I, I, I propose them, so I just can't say, oh, I want to remove them independently. Right? I mean, tell me if I, that's how I left it and I wrote the letter.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. I didn't just say, I asked they be requested, I didn't just say pull them off.
No, I, I think, sorry Christine.
No, no.
I was just going to say to that point, Michael, I mean, I think anything that's put on that has a select board on it, shouldn't be put on the article and put the select board opines on it, right? Because it was put on there from the select board and it's not put on there from you specifically. Like I, I think before it goes on there, we should have some discussion.
See, that's where I would, I'd probably differ with you there. Isn't that the point of the vote of, of, that we take to, if you decided that you wanted to work on something and bring it forward to town meeting and you wanted to put it on the warrant, that's the vote, you can take it, you're going to, the select board is ultimately going to vote to bring it to town meeting or not to bring it to town meeting. It isn't. to bring it to town meeting or not to bring it to town meeting, it isn't, I, you know, I, that's, that's my personal belief is, is the warrant, uh, you know, to get onto the warrant, I think any select board member should be able to put, get something onto the warrant, the question is, to get it to the town meeting, that's going to take a vote of the select, select board.
I think that's probably aligned in the Charter as well, right, Mike, as to how articles can be added.
Yeah, so you, you have a, a draft warrant, and then it's up to the board to decide.
The final warrant.
The final warrant, which articles you want to stay on, and which ones you want to come off, um, or if, the only thing different with that would be, say, um, an independent board, so say the Water and Sewer proposes something, and then their commission decides they don't want it, it should come off.
Because they, because they own that, because they own that piece, right?
So, so I guess let me put it a different way, I, I would expect, um, I would expect that there are some communications to the board about wanting to put an article on there before it comes on and it's shown as being put on there from the select board, because especially in this case, and maybe it's just a matter of process, and we need to get in front of this, again, before things go to FinCom, that we have discussion on it, because we didn't officially discuss it, but FinCom thought because it was on there by the select board that we supported it, right, and we had a lot of questions and we hadn't gotten to that point, so, it, and, Michael, maybe it's just more professional courtesy, but like, my expectation would be that we would have some discussion before it appears on an article, and then we're officially voting on it.
I, I think you, you kind of touched on the, the key part there, Renee, and I think it's the, the timing of the process, and for the, the select board to be out in front of the articles, to be able to turn over, call it a clean warrant, to FinCom to review and weigh in on, and not necessarily have to debate on any number of articles that could potentially come off, because we ultimately don't support them, um, the timing.
Right, and it's kind of like, it's kind of like what we did for the debt explosion, right, we talked about, well, how do we want things to appear in the article, do we want them to be separate, do we want them to be together, you know, like, we had discussion before it actually went on the article.
But, but Renee, this is where I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, um, we're gonna all, we're not all going to agree, and we're, there is going to be dissent, and if someone has, it doesn't mean that it's a bad idea, it doesn't mean this, but as a group, we vote and try to bring something forward, those articles, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I was hoping to get a lot more work done on those articles prior to my accident, but I just wasn't this, and I didn't think I gave them the proper time, I probably should withdraw them, drew them a little bit sooner than I did, um, but with that being said, any one of, anyone on the board should be able to, if they've got a concept to think, try to approve the town, the final article's going to be debated between us and voted on, it's never going to make it to a meeting without a vote to the, the select board, or to the, to, maybe to Jack's point, to FinCom, without us kind of working on it, so, I mean, I would agree with Jack that the timing may have been off, but I would never want to stop a member of the select board trying to improve something in town and taking the initiative to try to do it.
Michael, I'm, I'm not saying to stop it, and, and, you know, go take that some, your specific article, I'm saying that I would expect some discussion, right, like, you have, you have five board members, I think we're all interested in improvement, and there may have been suggestions from the board that, that could have, you know, been added into the language or just had discussion before it actually went on the article, like, it's, 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 again, like I said, maybe it's a matter of professional courtesy, um, but I would just expect something that has a select board's name to it, to have some discussion with the select board before that happens.
So.
You'd be beneficial to say, "Hey, you know, I'm thinking of this, this is kind of how I, how I'm envisioning it, like, what are your thoughts," right, like, just a, a general discussion.
This is, I guess, this is, this is kind of the challenge that I personally have had with just being a member of the select board, is the challenges of open meeting law, right? This is really what you're talking about, I, I would love to be like, "Hey, guys, this is what I'm proposing, would love to get your feedback for this," but it's very difficult to do that with the limitations of open meeting law, without it kind of just being put on there and then us talking about it, don't get me wrong, time, Renee, I will surrender, let's not even talk about mine, the, no, I'm not going to talk about mine, the timing of mine could have been much better, I would, I'll surrender to that, but I still think that it's still going to be brought up in front of a meeting, and this was the time for the articles, and we talk and debate articles all the time like that, so, I, I don't, I, I think this is just a, I, it was not as slight as a professional courtesy, it was, "Hey, this is what I want to approve," you know, "Let's talk about it, let's debate it," and guess what, if we shoot it down, it shoots down, right, so.
I think we've rolled into a grander philosophical discussion about how the select board approaches town meeting and the development of the warrant, um, because for, as Christine, I think this started with citizen petition articles, and, and I, and I'll, I'll be honest, Christine, I, I agree with, uh, just about everything you said, I, I struggle with what is the role of the select board to weigh in on a, a citizen petition article when ultimately we can't, we're not the ones responsible for putting it on, we are unable to take it off, that's, that's something that I personally struggle with, to try to make a determination on that, I hear Renee, what you're saying about, you know, it's our job as the executive branch of the government to, you know, have an opinion on that, which is fair, I just, I struggle with where exactly I come down on that, what, and I have made my feelings of open meeting law quite known, um, it's, it's very challenging to do collaborative workshop activities, uh, as we currently meet, um, I would, now, perhaps, Mike, you are aware of what other towns are able to do, to do some of these things, even, you know, while still falling within OML guidelines, uh, I just, I, I think it would be very beneficial for us to work together to brainstorm about what articles we would like to put on, either as individual members of the board for further debate, or as the board collectively.
Yeah, hey, speaking of which, um, I'm kind of on topic for off, but Jen, can we ask for the next meeting, a discussion on the alcohol license, so we're, we're pressed in time for that, for the next meeting, or for the next town meeting?
Yes.
Sorry, Jack, when you just mentioned cooperation, I figured we should get that on there before we do side of it.
Yep, well, that's, that's good. Now, perhaps we can pick this conversation up again when, when Meg's here and we're five strong, be able to, to do that, and, Mike, I, I appreciate it, I know, um, I've seen reference to workshop sessions in the Bill Ricker Board of Selectmen, um, I don't know if you're familiar or friendly with John Curran there, to get some insight as to how exactly those work, um, because I think, open meeting law, right, the, the meeting is accessible, but not necessarily for public participation, so maybe we just meet in a room and it's recorded, and that's, you know, fulfilling.
Meets the needs.
Yeah, um, okay, anything else on, on that one?
No, and, and just for full disclosure, Mr. Chairman, and I've kept you up to date on and so forth, uh, the previous two articles, I am investigating options through that, and I know that, and I will be glad, um, in another meeting or two, kind of try to update the board on things that I've worked on, maybe we can have an open, put them on the agenda as open discussions.
Okay, great, all right, uh, so the next item was strategic planning, which was Meg, who is not here, so we will once again, uh, kick that can into December, um.
Can I just on that, actually, I will discuss that with the chairman, actually, but it's one segment of it, um, we did, Renee and I did sit down with, um, Mr. Units, uh, to talk about goal planning and strategic planning on his part, um, we, and we, I will get an email out to, I meant to do it by this meeting, but I will get an email out to the other select board and Mr. Units, to just kind of set us kind of goals and what he's working on and so forth, and, uh, we'll lay out the, when we do the review the next time, to really redesign that to match up with his goals and expectations.
All right, excellent, thank you, Michael, uh, I see nothing under old business, is that?
Uh, Jack, I'm sorry.
Yes.
May I, before you switch old business, can I just ask for confirmation, um, did we set this town election to four, to April 30th?
Uh, yes, sorry, uh, that would be April 30th from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the middle school.
Okay, and no need to apologize, I apologize for being late, and then, um, we removed, did we remove the mask mandate based on Chris's recommendation?
Uh, so, no, so I don't know, uh, I don't know who was on Chris's distribution earlier today, uh, he has walked back his recommendation to end the mandate based on, I believe in his words, a substantial increase in cases in town, um, that he believes are related to an increase of indoor activities around Halloween, and with the upcoming holiday season and the amount of gathering done, uh, he is a bit nervous, uh, his recommendation would be to leave the mask mandate for town hall and municipal buildings until the end of January.
Okay, thank you so much, and I do apologize that I was late, and I'm getting it up based in the meeting longer.
Not a problem.
And before we jump to the next one, can we just, um, Jack, could we write on the next one, because I think we had mentioned it before, um, possibly changing the meeting day, like the select board meeting day, could we add that to the next agenda, since it's just next or, or, whatever it is, in December?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good, third time's the charm, Mike, any old business?
No.
All right, uh, we'll turn it over to you for the town manager's report.
Yeah, just to let you know, the, um, state did approve the tax rate at fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents, and I'd like to thank the financial team for everything they did, um, everything was submitted to the state on November 5th, and everything was approved by November 9th, so that's a quick turnaround, so obviously, all the information that was provided to the state, uh, was done professionally and, uh, allowed them to review it quickly and approve the tax rate, um, and just a couple grants, we received, um, a Brownfield Assessment Grant, uh, for forty-seven Elm Street, the Reed and Barton property, so this will enable us to work, uh, to do a Phase Two assessment on the property, and hopefully have that, um, done and completed by June, and, uh, this is important because there are people that have, uh, kind of started talking about purchasing that site, and, uh, the more we can find, uh, is through the Phase Two assessment, um, what's on site possibly for cleanup will help people make that decision, so hopefully, yeah, that helps.
So, is the sixty thousand, I know that there's a, there's a six-figure number out there for the phase, total Phase Two, is this sixty thousand going to get us, will get us started on Phase Two yet, or does that have to go to a savings, until we?
No, this will get us started.
Okay.
And, Mike, can you confirm whether or not we put any liens on the property for the expenses to date?
Yep.
We're, we're into that for at least several hundred thousand dollars.
And the other grant is a forty-nine thousand, uh, community planning grant, uh, this is a, a grant that Paul Di Giuseppe applied for, um, working with Serphead, and, uh, this will be used to hire a consultant, uh, to look at the center of town and, uh, work with businesses and, uh, figure out parking needs and things like that, so, um, thank them for all the work they did on that.
Excellent.
Mike, just as a follow-up, um, to the tax rate, can you, I asked during that time, and I don't want to wait till next year, can you get us a number to try to add the true commercial rate, so, right, the commercial rate's now eighteen, when then you add this up, but that's because they're paying less, right, because with, I'm trying to figure out what the tip impact is, if we took away the tips, what the real impact would be, right, for percentage? You know, I just wanted to follow up, I don't want to let that go, and I, it's something I, that they'll probably get to me for next year's presentation, but I think it's important number that we need to know in our head, because if the real tax, I got a funny feeling we're still going to see some tips coming down the road here, but I want to know if we're over that twenty percent.
Okay, sure.
I want to get that. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Mike on those or other topics? Hearing none, report in mail, I'll go around the horn, Christine or Renee, anything on Zoom land?
Nothing on Zoom land.
Um, Jack, I just wanted to mention a, a really just appreciation to, um, the Board of Health in Northern Public Schools and working together to get the vaccination clinics for the kids now that are eligible, the five to eleven age group, um, I think that's a, a great partnership and, um, really something that's good for the community overall, and the, and the booster shots too, I think that there was mention of the booster shots now for adults too.
Excellent, uh, yeah, I'm just trying to pull up an email I had seen earlier on this, uh, because I believe they're doing another round of clinics, uh, yes, uh, so the Board of Health and MPS will be hosting two additional, oh, that's already passed, never mind, why, why did they send the email today if it was from the sixteen?
I got one.
I, I think they sent an update, Jack, that people had a problem registering their second COVID shot, maybe?
Maybe.
Is that in there somewhere?
It was not clear, uh, oh, yes, there are currently technical difficulties, uh, reading comprehension's not my strong suit today, all right, never mind, we can edit that out and post, right, Jane? Cool, thank you.
Just for me?
There's a game on, it's okay.
Just let me just, I just wanted to, um, congratulate Estelle Flatt, the Veterans Agent, uh, for doing a great job organizing a great Veterans Day parade, it was the, from what I've seen, the largest turnout of, of observers and, and, and this, and the parade, and ceremonies were great, and she did an amazing job.
She does, uh, as I said to somebody the other day, I, why Veterans Day is not a federal holiday, um, it, it just continues to bog a lot of it, um, I know a number of us probably would have left to be there, but, um, our works are open, it's, makes no sense.
The flexibility I have lets, gives me a blessing to kind of attend some of these things.
Excellent, uh, very good, that brings us to Warrant Minutes, we're in the home stretch, uh, so this week, I have approved payroll warrant PR 22-11, the week ended November thirteenth, 2021, and warrant dated November eighteenth, 2021, in the amount of one million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty three, thirty-six cents, as well as invoice warrant AP 22-20, dated November tenth, 2021, in the amount of nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents, and invoice warrant AP 22-21, dated November eighteenth, 2021, in the amount of one hundred forty thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars and eighteen cents, um, which brings us to our old nemesis, the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
So, I want to have to be, I, I hope I'm not in, in stepping on Jen or anything, going, I want to sign some paperwork, I saw that she very nicely left the open meeting law page from the packet, the slide saying when meeting, minutes are actually due, very nicely, I loved the, I loved it, because I was like, "Oh, yes," um, but technically, open meeting law says that minutes need to be approved the latest of three meetings or thirty days, whatever is later, so, I'm not going to try and, obviously, we need to read these and approve them, but if we could try to stay within open meeting law to get these approved, um, I think Jen would appreciate it, and I think morally, we should appreciate it too.
I, I, I agree.
Um, I, I thought that there was, did we talk about this before, and, and town council advised that as long as we post them with a draft, in that, like noting that they're draft within that timeframe, that we're meeting open meeting law requirement?
Uh, actually, Renee, it's from what we, from Lauren's, uh, slides and so forth, um, because this is something I was going to bring up, I personally think we should move minutes to the beginning of the meeting, I think that would help us, I think by the time we get to the bottom, we're like, "Yeah, yeah," we'll just kind of punt on this one. Um, Renee, just so you know, and I'll be glad to share this with the group, um, it says the latest, uh, three meetings or three days, but whenever, whenever possible, approve the next meeting, um, and it says documents exhibits used publicly bodily must be retained by public body, but do not need to be physically stored in meeting minutes, um, upon request, it, and I, I've asked for explanation of it, because Renee, from what I've understood, because I, that draft thing doesn't really make much sense to me, because it's kind of like, "Oh, yeah, we could put a picture of me, you know, doing, uh, doing something, and say, 'Oh, that's the minutes,' but it was never approved," right? and say, 'Oh, that's the minutes,' but it was never approved," right? So it's just, it was a bad example, but bad metaphor, but, uh, it's, I just think we have to just take more priority on it and just get it done. And I would think moving it to the front of the meeting might help us stay high energized and get them through, get through it.
I, I'm not opposed to that. I, I think I mentioned before, we should allocate five minutes to just review them, right, review the last meeting, the last meeting minutes before the meeting. So if we don't have time outside of the meeting to do it, then we sit, we look at them quickly and then we provide changes and we approve either amended copy or as submitted.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to that. But we need to catch up regardless.
Yes.
Back to Christine's point.
So, uh, so Jen, if we could move warrants and minutes to the top, let's say, just...
I don't think we need to do this warrants, Jeff. Maybe just the minutes.
I mean, the warrants aren't, they're, they're bundled together, so.
Just do it, yeah.
If we, Renee, I like the idea of giving the five minutes beforehand, but if we do the five minutes, do we really want to waste, not waste, but people who come on for specific things, do we really want them waiting the five minutes? I'm, I'm sure they could, but just out of consideration, I don't know, just...
I mean, we, I think we put in there then that it's, you know, we're gonna spend five minutes on it. I mean, it's, the bottom line is, Christine, it's our meeting, right? Like, we need to conduct the board meeting. We move them to the end because of that, but we're not getting them and then we're gonna be a violation. So, I mean, we, we can set the expectation that, you know, the first 10 minutes are going to be administrative items, just like other groups do. Um, I think FinCom does this for every meeting and people can join later if they want.
Yeah, I like that.
All right. So, let's try this again. I think we have, uh, I keep losing my sheet that says which minutes I own. So, um, with the four of us on, if we each take some of these to review, uh, and start our next meeting, which is?
If I know Christine, she knows which one she has.
I'm, I'm sure.
I was not here with the meeting that you guys assigned this, so I, I got.
Oh, no, I had, no, Meg had August, I had the ninth, Jeff had the 16th.
Yep.
And look at that young memory too. Look at it. She's sharp as a tack.
So Meg had August, uh, Christine had that. Um, so we have September 30th and then four in October. What do you want me to take, Jack? Just, you want to do the 30th and the fourth?
Yes, I'll do 30th.
I'll take the 14th, Jeff.
Okay. Uh, Renee, and then the 28th. Uh, I will take the 28th. Okay.
So, so I reviewed the ninth. I'm okay with it, but I don't know, how do we want to do this? Like, since we're all taking different ones, do we just say, like, me, I read these, I approve, and then we just vote? Or do you all still want to read them?
So, so I guess this is where I'm a little, little confused, just because anytime I've been part of an organization, everyone's responsible for reading their own minutes and then making changes that they see fit.
Yeah.
And why aren't we doing that?
Uh, mostly because they wouldn't get it done. It just, they would just linger and we'd have somebody say, "Oh, I, I haven't gotten around to it. I'm not ready to approve it." So, just trying to expedite the review process.
Okay, because a motion's a motion to approve minutes and, right? So it'd be, it'd be the yay, yay.
I think Christine, you should push a motion if you're comfortable.
Yep.
Motion to approve September 9th, 2021 and September 9th, 2021 executive session minutes?
Second.
Great. Uh, Renee?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Me too. Uh, all right, that's two down. Thank you, Christine.
Jack, I can take the 28th if you'd like, since I already read those. I did mine.
I will not fight you on that one. Congratulations.
Okay.
All right. And, all right, our next meeting is set for Thursday, December 9th, after the holiday. So I wish you all a very happy, healthy and joyous Thanksgiving. May there be endless mountains of mashed potatoes, butter and gravy in your future.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other business to come before the board tonight? Seeing, seeing none. Uh, Chair had intended a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Renee?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye to MBS. Have a good night off.